Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for a pledge and I ask you to, please stay, remain standing, I want to recognize someone after the pledge, a late citizen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just, one of our residents pointed out that one of his neighbors, Joseph Cooney, died on March 17th. Joseph was a World War II veteran, not only that, but was involved in the invasion of Normandy on D-Day and Battle of the Bulge, and fought for our country, so please, let's give a moment of silence for Joseph Cooney. Minutes for approval, I'll call the minutes of, regular minutes of January 9th, 2012?
I will move that.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I'll call the minutes, regular minutes of January 23rd, 2012?
I move that.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
And call the executive minutes of February 13th, 2012.
Move that.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Alright.
One more?
Oh, one more, yes, I always like to zip through these. And call the regular minutes of February 13th, 2012.
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
And welcome, and I apologize for those that were here at seven o'clock, the, our regular meeting, we do call a meeting to order at seven, but go into executive session and then try to get out here as close to eight o'clock as possible, and that is our business as usual, but something different today, I'd like to welcome back Ray Cody. And Ray, would you like to say a few words?
I would. Mayor and members of the council and members of the Madison community, it's, it's great to be back, but it's even greater to be a Madisonian. Now's the time to put things behind us and move forward as a community, and I believe that working together, our future is bright. Responsible leadership and engaged citizenry can do wonderful things together, and the last couple of meetings have proven that exact point. Particularly, I'd like to thank Jim Burnett for his leadership during this period, he's a perfect example of what makes Madison special. Someone who cares deeply for this community and committed to always do the right thing, no matter what the personal consequences. I'm honored to work with him for the citizens of Madison. I may have been born in Orange, New Jersey, but I plan on finishing my life here on earth as a proud Madisonian, and thank you for bringing me back.
And I just want to reinforce one thing I've said to many residents over the last two and a half weeks, because I don't want this to be lost in some of the craziness over the last two and a half weeks, but it is the actions of two people. From the meeting of February 27th through the uncertainty of the weeks that followed, Ray Cody and Jim Burnett defined what it is to be true gentlemen. They could write the book on how to handle difficult situations and keep your head above water. In Jim and Ray, we have seen two of the best to ever represent this town, and I thank you. Thank you, Gene. And other things I want to cover, I attended this Saturday Executive Leadership Training Program for mayors and council presidents, very helpful. Also, I got a call from the governor's office on Friday, and they was a, followed up with a, some may have seen it in the paper over the weekend, we have received a $140,000 grant for the million and overlay of Rosedale Avenue, so that will be taken care of this year, and so it's a good partnership that we can extend our limited capital dollars. And on the library, the Madison Public Library is inviting the public to participate in the strategic planning process. A town meeting will be held this Thursday, March 29th, at 7:00 PM in the Chase Auditorium. All are invited, whether you are a frequent attender or infrequent attender, or not even too sure where it is. The only thing we ask is that you're willing to spend about an hour thinking and discussing the future of libraries in general, and how our Madison library services, collections and facilities can continue to meet our patrons' needs in the future. And more importantly, no preparation or expertise is needed, just an interest in our library. So again, that is Thursday, the 29th, at 7:00 PM. Public safety, Ms. Tsukamoto?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, we are, budget introduction, and then we'll get reports from committees.
Okay. Upon introduction and adoption, the 2012 budget and tax resolution will be published in summary in the Madison Eagle, that will be March the 29th, with a public hearing date set for April the 23rd, at 8:00 PM here in the council chambers, 50 Kings Road, at which time and place, all interested individuals will have an opportunity to be heard, there will be consideration for final adoption. A copy of the budget in full, as introduced, will be filed in the Madison Public Library and the Morris County Public Library for public review.
May I have a motion on Resolution R. 103, 2012?
I move R. 103-2012.
Second half?
That is the resolution of the Borough of Madison adopting 2012 budget and tax resolution. You have a move and a second, discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Alright, again, reminder that the final hearing is April 23rd. And now, reports from committees, public safety, Ms. Tsukamoto?
Okay, thank you. The Madison Police Department has responded to 1,784 calls for service thus far for the month of March. Officers responded to and investigated 24 motor vehicle crashes, issued 183 motor vehicle summonses, made 22 arrests, five of which were alcohol and/or narcotics violations. They have investigated 19 burglaries, one aggravated assault, five domestic violence complaints, and one stolen vehicle. The ambulance corps and the Madison Police Department responded to a total of 58 medical emergencies so far this month. Also, the department's Drug Abuse Resistance Education Unit conducted 12 sessions of their training to the youth of our community. The Madison Police Department, in cooperation with the Madison School District, presented the Every Five Minutes Program, I mean, Every Fifteen Minutes Program, excuse me, to the juniors and seniors at the high school. A big thank you to Officer Reipka for planning, coordinating, and presenting this dramatic and life-changing program. We also thank Officers Lango and Esposito and Lieutenant Datchinson for their assistance in the program. The Madison Police Department would also like to thank the Madison Fire Department, the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, the Atlantic Health Corporation, Fularin Park Fire Department, Madison Memorial Funeral Home, Roxbury Police Department, St. Vincent's and Madison Presbyterian Church, and Philly Dickinson University for their participation and help. We receive overwhelmingly positive feedback for the program from both the students and parents. We hope that the program has made an impact on making decisions about drinking and driving, as well as distracted driving, and we look forward to a presentation on this program at a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Both our electric and water departments continue their monthly maintenance and upgrades, especially with our major constructions going on, both on Park Avenue and our, the corner of Green and Greenwood and Main. The Madison-Chatham joint meeting this past Monday passed a, their budget, which is a 0% increase, so that's a good, on our side, as well as on Chatham's side. And a planning board did pass the zoning changes for the 10 Maple, and will be memorialized on February, excuse me, April the 3rd, at our planning board meeting. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Links?
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Catalonello?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, several things tonight. First, there will be a meeting for all interested gardeners, you know, what the heck, we enjoy it, at 7:30 on Wednesday, the 28th, at the ambulance corps. This is regarding the community gardens, so there will be a kickoff. Committee will present the progress, schedule, and dreams to the gathered group, so please come and make it if you can. The 2012 household hazardous waste and computer slash TV drop-off events are upcoming, they will be held throughout, starting in May and throughout the summer. On June 23rd, at Chatham High School, you'll be able to drop off a bunch of your stuff. And Jim, we're gonna make these flyers available, they're up front. Regarding the construction review committee, we had a meeting the past couple of weeks, and we have some good progress to report. The North Street Pump Station Forest Main redesign was awarded to Camp Dresser McKee. Bids have gone out, and they are to receive, to be received back by March 29th for the Park Avenue Forest Main work, in order to stay ahead of the Morris County paving project on Park Ave. We hope to have the Forest Main work done by the end of August, and then we'll be able to pave, or allow the county to pave immediately after that. The Woodland East, Woodland Road East improvements, the contract's been awarded to J.A. Alexander. The initial New Jersey Department of Transportation funds have been received, and J.A. Alexander plans to remobilize on April 15th and complete the work in six weeks. There are continuing projects on the Madison Recreation Center, parking lot paving, the cost of, looks like we'll be able to get the paving done for the parking lot, with that cost of paving being included in the original appropriation, so no borough funds will be spent on it, other than what was bonded for. 2011 road reconstruction programs for Pine Beach, Rose and Cedar, that award has been, has been given to Sofeli and Sons contractors, and work on drainage improvements was started, and curbing installations are expected to commence this week on Cedar Street. Academy Division Kings Construction Contract, and Kings Road Construction Contract was awarded to Matina and Sons contractors, and the main replacement on Division and Kings is complete. Finally, Rockefeller Group has indicated the intersection improvements at Park and Danforth are milled and paved. Signal installations are in progress and likely to be completed within the month. Top Line Construction has mobilized for Lewanica-Shumpike Intersection Improvement Project, sponsored by the County of Morris, on March 26th. Weather permitting, where tree clearing will be completed for site distance improvement within 200 feet of the intersection. And finally, both the County of Morris and the Borough of Madison anticipate working on Park Ave over the next few weeks, improving handicap ramps and forest main repairs in anticipation of the reservicing. That's it for me. Thank you very much.
Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan?
Sure. Okay, some good news, several new businesses are moving downtown, moving to downtown in the near future. Mimi's Deli is going to be taking over, is going to be moving into 114 Park Avenue, where Neil's Liquor and Deli used to be. Polish Nail Lounge is moving to 18B Main Street. Bento Grill, 20 Waverly Place, taking over the site of Stony's. Saks Kitchen Cabinet Showroom and Design Studio, that's going to be a 25 Waverly Place, that's taking over the site of where Town and Country used to be, and they've moved to 266 Main Street. So that's good news, our downtown's doing well. In addition, the Farmer's Market, we knew, there's going to be an item on the consent agenda tonight, is going to be, starting up in June, it's going to be in two locations. From June 14th to August 16th, it's going to take place on Waverly Place, like it always has, and then from August 23rd to October 25th, it's going to be in front of the Museum of Early Trades, where the concerts are held. They're splitting it this year. In addition, from the Senior Advisory Committee, Edna Earlyburn, now she's the coordinator of the Senior Advisory Committee, she's going to be attending a Morris County Division of Transportation meeting on Monday afternoon to, it's a stakeholder interview by an engineering consulting firm, and they're going to be studying the most effective and acceptable ways to improve access to train stations in the southeast Morris County, which includes Madison, Convent Station, and Chatham. Now, in line with that, and Jim gave me this right before the meeting tonight, at the Madison Train Station, on Tuesday, on Thursday, March 29th, there's going to be an open house, and it's going to be discussing ways to improve access to the train station, so all residents are encouraged to attend, okay? This is important. Okay. A reminder that the time of your life is going to be held at the Senior Center on Walnut Street on Saturday, April 14th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's going to be a forum where anyone who offers services to seniors in town are going to come and describe what type of services they provide. It's a good event, I've been talking with them, it's going to be well worthwhile, not only for seniors to attend, but also for family of seniors. If you know somebody whose family lives out of town, encourage them to come, see what Madison has to offer, it's a good program. Okay, and finally, May Day is beginning, it's going to be on Saturday, May 5th, they're going to be looking for some donations, and so look for this envelope in your electric bill, okay? It's a good event, watch out for this. Thank you, Mayor.
Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. The Madison Board of Health is pleased to announce the results of a registered environmental health specialist or sanitarians survey. Sanitarians are responsible, among other duties, for making sure that the 124 retail food establishments in Madison handle food safely and do not expose their customers to foodborne illnesses. The board conducted the survey during the last three weeks and received a very high 35% response rate. The, it consisted of six questions about the most recent REHS or sanitarians visit, and three additional questions when the most recent visit was in connection with a violation. Overall, the responses to the survey were very positive. For example, over 85% to 92% of the respondents said they agreed or strongly agreed with the sanitarians. Their survey also provided an opportunity for a free-form comment, and 12 were provided, so the majority of the comments were very positive, and gave appropriate recognition to, of two of our sanitarians, as well as the health officer. So, they also gave valuable information for improvement that, that was brought to the attention of the Board of Health, so those will probably be put in effect very shortly. But that was a good, that's nice to know, that our Board of Health is doing so well. Report from MASA. In January 2012, I requested permission from the Joint Court of Madison, Chatham Township, Chatham Borough, and Harding Township to place booklets in their court entitled "Legal Consequences of Substance Abuse." Three municipal alliances have partnered on the books that Harding had used in their court system for years. When the courts merged, Julie Malloy's Harding Alliance Chair approached health educator Christine Schessler, and invited the MACC, the alliances for Chatham Township and Chatham Borough, along with the Madison's alliance to collaborate on updating the booklets, so that it covered all three towns. Volunteers from the alliances completed the project, and the booklets now are on the outside table at the, the joint court system that's located downstairs. MASA's a great group, and they also supported the Every Fifteen Minute Program at the high school, by supplying from their very small grant money, the shirts that were worn by all of the participants, and the hotel accommodations for the students who participated in the program. I'd like to take just a minute to talk about the Every Fifteen Minute Program at the high school. I want to add my thanks to all the first responders that participated in this powerful program. I attended both of the sessions, and I was riveted by the way that the fire department, the police department, and ambulance squad performed in such a realistic and professional way. We're lucky as Madison residents that we have the opportunity to have people like that here, but we're also lucky that we have an employee like Chad Ripka, who's a patrolman who spent many hours of his own time coordinating this event. It was a great testimony to the importance of the program, because we brought in Atlantic Health Systems, St. Clair, St. Barnabas, they were all involved, Medevac was here with a helicopter, and it was, it was, it's a great testimony that, that people have come together for a special day like that. And special day thanks to Dr. Rossi and the Board of Ed for bringing this program to Madison. And I just want to encourage everyone, as, as Jeannie said before, if this film is shown, you have to take the opportunity to, to see what happened those two days. I would encourage you to do so, and bring a young person with you. This event will save the lives of our children. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor, since our last meeting, we've received three emails regarding the removal of Raymond Cody from Kurt Mulv, Cape Street, SW Scorch on Shady Lawn Drive, and Sarah Chapman of Morris Place, and a letter received today from Mr. Harrington of Cross Gates Road regarding the council's budget review.
Thank you. Come to our first invitation for discussion, this is the one that is limited to items on the agenda, and on the work agenda, we have the Madison 2020 Advisory Committee, and we also have an agenda discussion on reducing stormwater discharge in the sanitary sewer. You may also comment on any resolutions. So if you want to make a comment at this time, please step up to podium, state your name, your address, and the agenda item you're going to discuss, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone wishing to speak? And if this is related to the Madison 2020, as Chair of Environmental Commission, we certainly would want to have you part of the discussion, so if you want to talk at that point, that's fine, or you can go ahead and speak now.
Okay. I, I am, Betsy Alman, I am the Chair of the Environmental Commission, and I am talking in support of the Sustainable Madison Ordinance. Sustainable Madison, which was previously Madison 2020, but we're going with Sustainable Madison, will be Madison's team to pursue sustainable jersey programs, goals, and grants, to make the community of Madison a more sustainable place with actions that save money, are green, and strengthen the town's commerce. And this is a nonpartisan statewide program initiated by Rutgers and the mayor's committee. Madison experienced a lot of success in 2010 with it, earning bronze certification, and over 100 residents, business people, and educators participated. And we want to build on that and reach silver status over the next year. In order to do that, Sustainable Madison must be recreated, after lapsing in 2011. And the ordinance provides for a permanent committee affiliated with the Madison Environmental Commission, with members drawn from the MEC, the council, particularly the liaison to the DPW, school board, borough administration, as well as five residents. And there will be many additional volunteers welcomed into the meetings and the projects. The projects are complicated, and they do require the coordination of the MEC, the Borough Administration, the schools, and the council, and that's drove the makeup. And projects are long-lasting, and they require the supporting organization to be permanent, which is why this is to be set by an ordinance and not a resolution that expires with the calendar year. And the net financial impact of Sustainable Madison will be positive, there's no budget associated with it. It will be allowed to compete for grants now that don't require matching funds, that if you have a green team, you can compete for Walmart grants and so forth, administered by Sustainable Jersey. And Sustainable Madison programs will continue to look for cost savings through green actions. And the example of the energy audits conducted by Stephen Stocker illustrate this, he has worked on those projects since 2009, and tried to determine actual energy consumption in the municipal buildings, to find ways to reduce that consumption. It could be with insulation or more efficient lighting, perhaps solar panels in the future. But so far, the work done on the library, Citi Center Municipal Building of the DPW, and electric building have been done, and with the library, the light bulbs all were switched over, and they, that should result in annual savings of about $8,000. Other savings through the schools, by getting matching grants and having them underwritten with the state of New Jersey, you know, we might pay 30%, and the rest of the programs pay 70, and yet, and could yield savings of $26,000 a year, based on the Kings Road, Central Avenue, and Woodland Road headquarters. So that's what we're about, and it's in, passing the ordinance, it's an opportunity to restore Sustainable Madison, which is an organization that has a multiplier effect in the community, and is an engine for volunteer activity. Thank you.
Thank you, and stay close by in case we need, during discussion, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on the agenda? Sam?
Hey, welcome back, Ray, I missed you.
Thank you.
Just a point of information, Sam, through Seattle Park Avenue, that's your new, part of your new job, is the town attorney?
No, no. I forgot to, Joe, Joe called in sick last minute, and so we are meeting tonight without our borough attorney, and we had an open seat at the table, as they say.
Thank you. I just wanted, two resolutions I'd like to just touch on. I'm going to start with Resolution 100, the Farmer's Market. You know, I talked to a lot of people in Madison, and I don't know if he's all, everything's all set that we're going to go on Waverly Place, and then we're going to go on Green Village Road, but just take this into consideration, maybe for next year, or if it's not too late. A lot of people liked at the high school, they liked Rosedale Avenue. I talked to a lot of business people in Madison, you know, with the parking, and it's a tough situation, especially, not only do the Farmer's Market take on the east side of Waverly, Waverly Place, they take on the other side, when they park their trucks with all the stuff on it, they gotta go, and then you're gonna go on Green Village Road, I don't know where these guys are gonna, a lot of parking problems. Plus, the old timers are saying that, you know, when they go buy some corn or tomatoes and everything, they gotta walk a mile and go to their car, and just think about it. I, my feeling is, they'd rather have it back at the high school, and they'd rather have it back at Rosedale. So just consider that, that, you know, some people would like to go back to the old ways. And like I said, in my opinion, somebody's not going to buy two or three dozen tomatoes and go to a store and buy a, you know, just think about it, that's all. That's on that one resolution. The other one is the, the examine of the budget, you're going to examine the budget there?
Self-examination.
It's self-examination. What do you mean by self-examination, what does that mean?
Go ahead.
Normally, the process is, for a municipality, after the budget's introduced, it's submitted to the state for review and approval. If you meet certain criteria, which we happen to do, there's 10 steps in the New Jersey Administrative Code, our CFO certifies to that, such as that we haven't had an operating deficit, we don't get transitional aid. We don't get transitional aid. We have a collection rate of 90% or better. All, and similar categories like that demonstrating that we are a well-managed, fiscally sound community. Under that circumstance, every two years, you're allowed to self-examine your budget document, and you do not have to submit it to the state for approval. It's kind of like a stamp of their confidence in the borough of Madison that our finances are in good hands with the governing body and their CFO, and that we could self-examine our, our own documents.
And can I talk about, you know, some suggestions on the budget?
It's up to the mayor.
Yeah.
It's, well, we will have a full hearing in two meetings from now, so that would be the time on things on the.
I just, I just, I just think this is important, if you, you know. You know, Ray, that was a beautiful introduction, you know, with the little, as a matter of fact, I'd like to have a copy. That was good. I like, I like your introduction.
You got, I'm giving you Ray's, Ray spoke for 30 seconds, so you have 30 seconds.
And I agree with you 100%. The key is respect. And I would wish that we stopped playing games, and this is my perception, with these games with the, I don't know, who don't talk to this one, who don't talk, it's like the Democrats. We got to stop and do what's best for the town of Madison, okay? It's, it's a bad, it was a bad atmosphere.
I think, I think we're, we're off of the agenda items, so you can come back after the agenda discussion, so we have that second.
Well, this is part of the budget. I think it's important.
We'll have you come back because there, all right. Thank you. Anyone else? Maureen? Items on the agenda?
Yeah, Maureen Byrne, 49 Albright. I just wanted to address the reason the farmer's market is on Waverly Place in Green Village Road is that the farmer's market is sponsored by the Downtown Development Commission. And the Downtown Development Commission is charged with helping to develop the downtown business community. And we have felt that by holding the farmer's market downtown Madison, where people on their way to Reology, on their way to Doral Park, drive by and see the farmer's market, will stop for the farmer's market, but will hopefully also then see the other businesses and retail establishments that we have here in Madison. Yes, it's a lot easier for me if we had the farmer's market at the high school. I'd have my Thursday mornings back, and I wouldn't be chasing people from their parking spaces. But we really do believe that it's, it's bringing people down to the downtown area. We only take over the spaces on the east side of Waverly Place. We've configured it so we do not, we only take those 16 spaces, and we take those 16 spaces from 1:00 in the afternoon until 8:00 at night. We've done countless parking surveys. There is always parking on King's Road. Yeah, you have to walk to the other side of the train station. We are working with one of the downtown businesses to possibly provide carrier baskets on wheels, which will help people bring their produce back to their cars. We're also working with the senior center to see if we can do a shuttle service from the, from the senior center down to the farmer's market on Thursdays to, to address that problem. But we really do, we really do feel that, yes, there are drawbacks, but we really think that the farmer's market belongs in the center of town where, where everyone can see it and appreciate it.
Thank you. And, yeah, don't forget to fill. And also, part of the idea of the split location this year is so you don't burden Waverly Place beyond the summer.
And, and we won't be taking up any parking when we're on Green Village Road because there, there is no parking on Green Village Road.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on the agenda?
I'm Helen Crozier. I'm Helen Crozier. I live at 24 Valley Road here in Madison. We purchased our property in 1958. So I think I, even though I'm only an ordinary person with no particular significance here, I am a person that has counted many times trekking, appreciating, and observing many things in the council. First of all, I wish to say that by chance, perchance, I was here when Mr. Cody was welcomed warmly with a reception, a special reception by council when he assumed his job. And I, I think from our hearts, we're giving him another reception of a different kind, a welcome back. I was also perchance here at the meeting when, it was back in the 1980s, when they had a procedure for reviewing budgets and the procedure for meetings, discussion, and so on. Just budget matters per se, not personnel, but trying to have economy. I think it was sponsored and encouraged by Francis Mantone on the council at the time. I was present at the time, and I was very impressed with the pros and cons that were considered. And I hope that with council members being so recent, or most of them being so recent, then the recent, within the years, that you observe some of the past traditions, some of the past efforts and recommendations by people to preserve the stability of this town. As an investor in property, we invest not only in the property, we invest in the future of our property, wanting the stability. We want the stability of knowing some of the things that we can count on coming forth. And also, we invest in the community. We love the community. We stay here because we have stability. We have stability of the prospects for ourselves and our investment in our family. Now, what I just was motivated to stand up and say was it's a farmer's market, which is a great addition to the town, particularly bringing the seasonal fresh produce. But I'm one of the people that has had the misfortune of trying to drive Lincoln Place. Maybe I just can't think of Thursday afternoons and keeping track of it. Maybe I just have a lapse of concentration at the time. But the number of times I have driven to other towns to get to the drugstore because I'm a regular patron of the Madison Pharmacy, I'm a regular patron of the bank, and it just seems like everything I want to do in the center of town for the months that the thing is, is being held on Waverly Place. There I am, turning my car, stuck with U-turns, traffic, unbelievable traffic. When the trains are coming in, the students are coming in in the afternoons and the commuting. And so I just wish that you would consider that as part of the, of one person multiplied by many people, I'm sure with the inconvenience of having so much. It's not just half of Waverly Place. It's much of the commerce and the driving and the, particularly the hazard of Lincoln Place with so many people trying to cross and carry and with cars going every which way, not knowing how to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on the agenda? Seeing none, I close this. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Tony, come on up. Remember, please state the agenda item as you step up to the lecture.
Tony DeRosa, 9 Alexander Avenue, referencing the farmer's market issue that we just heard a number of people speak about. When the farmer's market first came to town, I was one of the advocates to try to get it into the Waverly Place area. And it took a, a number of years to get it there, and I thought, this is great. It's finally where it should be. From that point to this, what's happened is people have become very health-conscious about the produce that they're buying. That farmer's market has brought in a lot of business. You've heard that downtown is the area that we want people to see, but when people need to get to it at that time, they're deprived of it. We had the high school at one time. We had the, the Rosedale Avenue site, and we shared the two. But we also had it at the plaza, and we're forgetting that we have the east end of Main Street where businesses really want to have more traffic. So maybe not this year, maybe next year. Maybe the planners can just try it for a year. Parking is easier. Those businesses really would like to have that interaction down there. And I believe we've been trying to get that end of Madison to be part of, not the downtown district. That can't happen simply because of logistics, but it can happen in trying to make the town one. So that's pretty much what I wanted to offer for, for thinking as the planners look ahead to next year. I thank you for listening. I too want to welcome back Mr. Cody and thank Jim Burnett for what he's done. And, you know, the mayor has taken a lot through all this, and I commend him for handling these meetings and keeping the town under control. It was, it was not an easy task, but everyone did it well. And of course, I thanked the council last time for reversing their decision. So I don't want to extend any more time taken. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda discussion items and Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Council has a packet, in their packet, an ordinance suggestion, which was advanced by the Environmental Commission. Mr. Link submitted the agenda recommendation for discussion for the establishment of the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee. It would be a permanent committee operating similar to the DDC or other permanently established committees. It discusses membership. It discusses the establishment, terms of office, and, and alike. And I wanted to field any questions. I know that Betsy's also here to field questions, and happy to answer any questions you have. I, I think the most important thing, and having been an environmental commissioner and also been involved in the Sustainable Jersey movement and everything else is, when you look at the definition of sustainability, it's not just the environment. There's three legs to it. They call it people, profit, and planet. And the planet is the environmental part, but sustainability almost always has within it an economic portion to it. And oftentimes, borough governments, municipalities, counties, and states can advance good sustainable practice through their purchasing. That can be done, and I slipped Mayor Conley a note asking maybe to alter the membership to add the future purchasing officer and our esteemed engineer to this committee so there'd be a few more staff on there to help share the load for whatever the volunteers are looking to advance. But it's important just to keep in mind that in any sustainable action, economics are folded into it as well, and it's almost always economics that is obviously beneficial to the town. We've talked multiple times about the, the program that Steve Stocker advanced to do the direct install to improve the lighting here. That really would be, would, would be and will continue to be an excellent program that would fall under this program here of sustainability in that it's going out, purchasing grants, and making decisions that are not only good for the environment, but in the end, the borough, the borough's going to benefit from the economics of that. So with that, I'd just like to open up the discussion to council if they have any questions on this or want to discuss, discuss it. It's, it's just a discussion item. The ordinance is not up for, for consideration, but I think that's, that's the main goal, is to decide whether it's something that's appropriate to advance.
Carmella, and then, and then Rob?
I just want to make a comment about how very important this particular advisory committee would be. As we go through the next cycle, as you know, we're at the Bronze Level, Level of Certification, and this is the group that actually went ahead and, you know, procured that, that designation. And we have the opportunity to move on to the Silver Level of Certification. We now have opportunities in Madison. We have Reology that's coming in, and they're very leagues pro. They're doing lots of really great things up there that are going to save the environment. We also have had from the Green Village Road RFQs. Lots of those particular individuals are going to look for sustainability, and they, they talk about sustainability a lot in the RFQs. So I, I personally think that we need to establish this advisory committee. This advisory committee is going to bring us into the next 10 or 20 years. We need to start thinking about the solar panels, you know, the possibility of solar panels, panels up on the 39 acres. And I would love for them to be able to move us into the Silver Level of Certification. That's really going to really get into rain gardens, solar, wind, geothermal, things that we don't know an awful lot about, and actually taking care of natural resources in this town, the trees and the woodlands management. There's a great deal of work that has to be done. And a town like Madison, that's already Tree City USA, we need to sustain all of that. So I'm in absolute favor of moving this into, you know, an advisory committee.
Rob, Rob, and then Bob?
Jim? So I'm totally in favor of this sort of thing. And hopefully, when we get this group together, we can look at the biodiesel we've been talking about for a while. But I have a couple of questions. First of all, as I understand it, under the current setup, the Madison Environmental Commission can pursue grants and, and Silver Certification without limitation. Is that correct?
I, I, I do believe that's correct. I don't, I haven't been following all the grants that they've been pursuing, so I can't say with any certainty.
But there's no limitation on them to say they can't.
Right now, we don't have a Green Team. It's expired, so we cannot, we do not qualify to apply for those Walmart grants and the others that don't require matching.
So, so we, we can get some grants. This opens a door for more, for.
We can only apply for AMJET grants and things like that, but not the Sustainable Jersey because we don't qualify anymore.
Okay. Now, the only other question that I have is, the way that the DDC is set up has set up the May Day Committee, where it's sort of, it's a subcommittee of the group. Can, maybe can someone just walk me through the pros and cons of setting up the Green Team as a subcommittee of the Environmental Commission as opposed to making it its own sort of group? I'm just wondering what the contrast would be there.
Well, we want to have representation from the administration, the school board, from other residents rather than just those members of the Environmental Commission, so.
Right, but on the May Day Committee, there are people that aren't on the Downtown Development Commission. Am I wrong about that?
So it's, it would not be a true subcommittee. It is a committee. Yeah, yeah, the committee that feeds through the DDC.
Well, it will have one common member between the Environmental Commission and so forth, but we do, we do need a standing committee.
Absolutely, no doubt.
So this is the, the way we.
That's your preferred, this is your preferred methodology, fair enough.
Bob, and then, and then Don?
Sure, you know, when I heard about this, I said, you know, I was thinking of my father. He grew up in a small town on Long Island, Babel, Long Island. And he remembered when that was all farmland around there. And when I moved to Madison, he said, you know, I like where you are, but don't let it get too built up. Keep it nice. You know, because Long Island was paved over. So when I hear about this, I say this is a step in the right direction. It's one of the reasons we moved out here. I think the environment is important. When you see the young families moving in, they need a safe environment for their families to, you know, for their children to play in. So, you know, this is a very, very worthwhile cause, and, you know, I'll support it any way I can. Thank you.
Don? And then Jeannie, after?
I want you all to be careful. I don't want you to fall out of your chair. That's a joke. I'm not exactly known as environmentalist, but I really am. I support this 100%. It makes no sense. We have, excuse me, but we have three environmental problems in this town right now. Am I right? We're going to get to the bottom of those three before the end of the year. And although we discuss a few things that are in the executive, I'll be. And although we discussed a few things that are in the executive, I'll be there with you guys on Thursday and I'll give you a ballpark idea why I want to, before I was to tell mine. So, Bob, I want to have my vote, and I thank you.
Ginny?
Yeah, two questions regarding membership. One is, since this committee is going to be working closely with land use issues, I'm hoping that there will be a member of the committee who will be either a representative or who has expertise in land use to add another member, and...
I, we don't have a formal representative from the planning board or other, but we would very much need that expertise.
Right, right. So that will be one of my suggestions to add that to this group. Secondly, is if you look at the paragraph under membership, the very last sentence over there, typically, when we have this kind of advisory committee, it's typically appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council. But in addition to that, this calls for the consent of the Madison Environmental Commission. The question is, do we have other committees that will require the advice and consent of another committee? I don't believe we do, so that's something that we need to look at.
And we may, may need to look into that just to, you know, that's a good...
We do, we certainly do not want to set a precedent.
Yep.
Yep. So those are, and I believe someone already mentioned that the purchasing officer will be another addition. It was another one of the comments here, so if we would add that as well, that, that would be it.
All right, and Jim had a...
Just, the DDC has, maybe Members is not the right person, but, you know, Mara Johnson runs May Day and she's not a DDC commissioner, so they're, they're vol, maybe, you know, non-advisory, she's a non-advisory, or a non-voting advisory volunteer that runs May Day. So maybe it's just a terminology thing, I call them a member. And, and I would just bring to the attention, as we're talking about membership, on the DDC, as a staff, as a staff member and the ex-officio staff member, I don't have voting rights, so there may be some logic to looking at this and having this, any staff member that's on there not have voting rights and let it just be the volunteers that are...
I think that would be good, so we'll make, make a note of that. So we have the voting, the role in environmental commission, maybe it's advice but not consent, so they have an advisory role, they can make recommendations. The other, with the land use, is maybe add a line that says a current or past member of the planning board, so, so we're not going to dwell too many times, so it could be someone that's once served on the planning board, and we keep them active and involved.
I mean, if, if you're able to expand it to include more borough administrators, DPW is critical, the electrical department's important to us. I mean, but we were hoping that we could work in sort of a rolling as projects required it, that we could do the expertise without trying to burden the borough administration with regular meetings.
And I don't think you want to throw the balance too much, so it's all sudden volunteer and staff 50-50, so obviously, every, every borough employee is a resource when needed.
Right.
So we, we, I think we have some items to work in there, and then we'll bring it back for introduction. If, when's the, when's the next Environmental Commission meeting?
Our Thursday, this Thursday.
This Thursday, so, so you'll be meeting between now and the next council meeting, so hopefully, we'll, we'll be ready to introduce it at April 9th.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Stormwater discharge into sanitary sewer.
I'll take that, Mayor. I submitted an agenda recommendation for discussion. It is purely for discussion, and Bob Vogel's here to discuss some of the specific issues as they relate to storm water or rainwater getting into the sanitary sewer. And I passed the baton over to Bob, but the two questions that we're asking for here in terms of requesting the council is to permit a deeper legal review to confirm that we have the legal authority to, to enforce in an appropriate way, gain access and enforce and correct and remediate the issue, and then also development of the actual plan on how to execute that. So that's the end goal, what we're looking for here, but I'll pass the ball over to Bob Vogel, and he'll talk about the issues as to why this is a problem.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I suppose following up to our budget discussion earlier in the year about North Street being a huge priority for us for this year, it makes sense to go over the importance of the North Street Pump Station with regards to the sanitation for the entire town or major portion of it. It's the only pump station that we have that, that services 1,000 particular properties. And being between 20 and 25% of the total borough in terms of, in terms of the number of properties it serves, North Street Pump Station and its function are critical to maintaining a reasonable level of service, and that's the sanitary source service for the borough. Now, as you go back, you know, over the years, you can see that the infiltration and inflow problem is a recurrent problem. It's a persistent problem throughout the years. We've done many reports about this. We've done many flow monitoring assessments. And what it shows is that the peaking factor during rainfall is disproportionate to a reasonable pump station operation because stormwater is getting into the sanitary sewer. We spent a fair amount of time and money several years ago going through a lining program, which did help the North Street Pump Station service area. It was focused on North Street Pump Station service area, and it was focused on leaking joints in the old clay pipe that occurred every four, four to six feet. And during rainfall, you could run a camera through there and see all the joints leaking in the pipe. And so it became a, you know, an issue that we really needed to address. So we did a fairly comprehensive lining program, to your credit, and we pulled it off quite well. I think the contractor that we had allocated for that work was excellent, and really gave us a very good return on our money. And since, since that time, we have tried to bid and award upgrades to North Street Pump Station in, in concert with both Penoni Associates and now Camp Tracer McKee. Camp Tracer McKee was hired to review the Penoni plans and specs, and they've been working on this project for about a year. And Camp Tracer McKee met with us at the Capitol Project Review Committee on last, two Thursdays ago, I believe it was the 15th. And, you know, Camp Tracer McKee echoed this issue again, that I&amp;I is a major factor in appropriate and reasonable function of the North Street Pump Station, and there's really no getting away from it. It's a, it's a problem that would be cost-effective for us to attack while we're attacking the operations of North Street in more of a maintenance light in terms of replacing pumps and replacing certain valving and replacing the transformers, which we wanted to put bedmark transformers in as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues at, at North Street which are addressed through the construction contracts, but as you remember in our budget discussion, the question that was asked of me is, when we spend the money, will it, will it 100% solve the problem? And my answer was no, unfortunately, because the I&amp;I problem we know is, is, is a very critical component of getting this, this, this pump station up and operating at a standard that, that would, that would go along with other sanitary sewer pump stations throughout the state. And so, again, after a meeting with Camp Tracer McKee, they echoed the issue again. I believe that was the genesis of Jim trying to put it on the agenda and saying how important it was for us to follow through and allocate a portion of the monies that we had set up for the construction projects at North Street for I&amp;I reduction, infiltration and inflow reduction. What basically it is, is setting up a program where you go out, you test individual residences for any illegitimate cross connections to the system, and it could be a yard drain, it could be a sump pump, it could be even the drain, for the foundation drain for the house. These things 100 years ago were routinely connected to the sanitary sewer system, and we can't afford to have that happen anymore. And so we need to give the residents not only options, but we need to identify the problems for them and say, "Look, you need to disconnect. Here's your option, put in a sump pump or take the sump pump and, and discharge it to the storm sewer instead of the sanitary sewer." We, staff had put up a fairly comprehensive program to 1,000 residents. We sent notices out to 1,000 residents last year, and again, following up and dedicating time and staff and effort to solve that problem while we're solving the North Street Pump Station structural problems is integral to, to, to really solving all of our problems for, for the pump station's operations, so. Jim?
I would just want to add that, in the reports, you'll see that it talks about the, during heavy storm, that the inflow exceeds the pump capacity. That's a problem. The inflow exceeds the force main capacity. That's a problem. But we're only talking about North Street. There are other pump stations that we have throughout town that are in similar situations, and even if it's not in a pump station, and you live on Prospect, we'll say, and it just heads straight down to the joint meeting, it's unnecessary to send all that water to the joint meeting and have it processed there. We're paying 60-plus percent of the cost of processing at the joint meeting, and if we can reduce the amount of flow that's going down there, our, our investment down there will last a lot longer. So it's not just, North Street, it's not just pump stations. It's really something that we may want to address throughout the entire town, and, and it will have a positive benefit in the economics of the pump stations, but also the economics of the joint meeting.
Rob?
So, I'm wondering, and I read through this, and, you know, the, what I took from it was that there was going to be some sort of potential punitive action against residents who continue to, you know, basically have their sump pumps going into the sanitary sewers. I, I'm wondering, in addition to a stick, if we can offer a carrot? So, because I think a lot of, you know, a lot of these people need help because of this way they've always done it, and, you know. So is there any way that we can measure the amount of water that we send, you know, during inclement weather to the, to the joint meeting and to our other, you know, figure out how much that costs us? Okay? And then, so if we, if we know what that incremental pumping costs us, what we know we can save by asking residents to, to modify their behavior? And, and then, wouldn't it be a good idea if we can come up with some sort of a program to share that game with them to make the transition easier for them? Because otherwise, like we've talked about before, a lot of times the inspector will show up, you know, they'll unconnect it, so as the inspector leaves, it goes right back into the slop sink into the, in the basement, right? And we don't want to have to be doing this year over year. We'd like a comprehensive, long-term solution. So I would suggest that before we do anything on this, we try to get some real numbers around it, so we know what the cost of the borough is, and then see if we can offer some sort of incentive as well as just penalties.
My question is similar to what Rob just said, but I would be interested in knowing if there's any way that you can quantify the extent of the problem, not in terms of the flow, but in terms of how many households are we talking about?
Our guess, for 1,000 houses that are in the system, is in order to double the flow over the design flow, you would need about 100 sump pumps operating simultaneously. So our guess, at this stage of the game, is 100 of those 1,000 houses have sump pumps cross-connected to the system, whereas there's an option to put those sump pumps into the storm sewer system at this stage of the game, which is a far preferable way to proceed. And so, I, in terms of a rough guess, 10% of the, of the property owners in that, in that service area for North Street Pump Station would be having to upgrade, modify, or deal with some type of enforcement action. And I, I, you know, I, I, I think it'd be great to get away from penalties altogether as long as we get voluntary cooperation, and I think that's always been the key. If we can do that, that's, that's, that's a much more effective way to go about it, and I do believe there's a simple way to actual, actually calculate what the inflow and infiltration and illegitimate cross connections cost us, because we know what it costs to treat this material down at the, down at the joint meeting. So it's easy to apportion our flow and say, "Well, that portion costs you this much to treat, this portion costs you this much to treat, and this is what your pumps are costing us." It's a, it's a big number.
Thank you.
Carmella?
Bob, the North Street Pump Station, I'm looking at this map in the back. Does, that take into consideration those 1,000 homes that you're talking like Beechrose, Pine, in that area?
Yes.
Okay. There's always been water issues there, okay?
Even in the gas line.
And every, yeah, and everything has a tendency to flow this way, okay? So you're, you're coming down the hills on a constant basis.
Correct.
Is, is any of that work that you're doing up there now, would, would that be taken into consideration that maybe some of that inflow will be stopped?
I think, I think offering, and one of the big things that's happened in the last 25 years in terms of providing an option for residents who need, who at one point connected or maybe currently connecting their sump pumps to the sanitary sewer system is the fact that we've improved storm, stormwater drainage systems throughout town on a relatively consistent basis, and that neighborhood is, is no exception. We're running drainage up the street and down Pine Avenue, and so residents will have an option for connecting their sump pumps someplace other. And so the, the, the answer is, is there.
So while you're doing that work, I mean, is it possible to do like a smoke inspection at that point to see if there's any?
If I could hire one, if I could, if I could hire someone to, to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so. And we could work with residents during that road reconstruction project.
Right.
Of course, at this point, you know, hoping it's limited to six weeks, particularly Councilman Landrigan will be hoping that it's limited to six weeks. If it's longer than that, you know, we'll have to try to find another way. But, yeah, unfortunately, construction is what it is, and people aren't really happy until we leave. But the, you know, the, the smoke testing and perhaps working with residents on sump pump connections, and I think we've done this routinely where the stormwater exists. If there isn't stormwater infrastructure there, we have to find another way, and perhaps it's time to look at that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Couple of comments I have. One related to what Carmella was just talking about is, I think we should make it a standard routine now. Any, any neighborhood where we're going to go in and do some stormwater work is do an advanced notification. Here is, and this kind of goes with a carrot instead of a stick. Here is a time for fixing any bad connections. You can tie in, as we're opening up the street, we're opening, we're putting in new inlets, go ahead and now you can tie in. It's going to add value to their home, because no one wants to buy a home that's got bad stormwater management, so I think that should be automatic. The, some other next steps, the input of the cost, and this is not an easy cost thing to fig, figure, you know, would be if our joint meeting fees were based on outflow, which we now have a meter as opposed to water usage in town, we would save for every gallon that goes out, we'd save a dollar. But we know there is going to be substantial savings. More importantly, it's kind of hidden in the, the capital costs. We've talked about the improvements we need at the pump station North Street, and we need to do it. I don't want to spend money to pump out stormwater. We should be pumping out sanitary, so it's, and the same thing as Rob pointed out during discussions recently about the potential of a $2 million improvement at the joint meeting. That's fine if we're taking care of sanitary water, but if we're paying $2 million to take care of rainwater, that's unfair to most taxpayers. So we, it's, it's almost, you know, as a shift over from the carrot part to the stick, it's almost a theft of service, because the people that are putting their stormwater into our sanitary are stealing from the others that have to pay for it. So we, we should really, we need to get moving on this. I think this has been one of those annual discussions, at least the six years I've been here, and prior, prior to that. So let's get the homework done, and let's figure out how to do it. And I've also got some thoughts as far as enforcement as we move forward, some other projects of doing things together, but we'll do the homework first. But we'll do the homework first before we get to that one. So we we know what the homework we're doing, cost save, figure out the cost savings so we can figure out a way to offer a carrot. And then the other is a review of things in case we need to stick. Okay?
Great. Thank you very much.
Went on to ordinances for hearing.
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March 12th, was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance one, 2012 for second reading and ask the clerk to read the said ordinance by title.
Ordinance one, 2012, calendar year 2012 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit and to establish a cap.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on ordinance one dash 2012? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance one dash 2012.
I second the ordinance.
Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Cattellinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
All right, we're now on our second invitation for discussion. At this point, public may speak on any topic. Again, keep it to three minutes. When you step up to the lecture and state your name, your address, and write the same. And again, keep it to three minutes. Sandy?
Sandy Kulakowski, 136 Park Avenue. I might have misunderstood from the last conversation that we were just having. But the one thing that I guess I would want to encourage is if we're going to try and take sump pumps off of the sanitary, I would hope that we would try and figure out ways that we can have, if people can, depending on their property, have it pump onto their grass so they could infiltrate back into the groundwater system rather than going into the storm drains. Because it might be 10, 15 years from now and we may have a problem with storm drain capacity. So it would strike me that, you know, Bob would know about that as far as, you know, rain garden and other ways to kind of treat the water. But I know when I moved into my house, it was hooked up to the sanitary sewer and a plumber looked at it and he said, you know, town doesn't like that. And I said, oh, I didn't know. And he said, you know, pump it out. And it's pumped out and it pumps out and, you know, away from my house, but into the ground and seeps back into the ground. So rather than infiltrate the roadways and the storm system, we there may be, you know, an option before that.
Okay, since we have members of the Environmental Commission still in the audience, how about discussing at your next meeting, the potential of putting together educational piece of a good way to get rid of your stormwater? So alternatives besides just having it flow back to the river or overwhelm the systems. I think great idea. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. Regards to Sandy's comment. I just wonder, is there anything in the plan or regulations? Well, first of all, I think the partnership with the people is great, you know, carrot rather than stick. You want to try to get voluntary compliance on this and because we're all stakeholders in it, and it is costing us money. Was there anything in there to regulate just what she said where they do have a suggestion from the Environmental Commission if they want to pump it in a yard that's going to go into either dry well right into the ground, something regulated, so we don't have neighbor disputes of he, she's flooding my yard? Because I actually ran into that one of my properties. I was trying to figure out why the seller's flooding all the time. And it just not intentionally my neighbor had his sub pump just coming out of the house and on one level down it was coming in. So I partnershiped up with him and we corrected it. We didn't hook it up to the storm, the drain, the illegal hookup. We brought it out further to the street. So any regulations or guidelines of where they could put it and how they could put it so it works for everybody? Is that in there anywhere? Because I didn't read the document.
I think we could probably add that to our educational piece of, you know, how to how to do it.
Okay.
And so we don't have pump, sump pump wars of sump pumps going back and forth.
Which would cause more police calls.
Right.
I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Carmen?
I'm glad to see Madison is back to normal again on the administration level. Carmen Pico, 81 North Street, Madison. I want to talk about the North Street Pump Station. I'm not a homeowner in town. I rent a two-family house. Every time there's a heavy storm, there's a shut-off valve in the basement that if I forget to turn it off, when the rain keeps on coming and coming, the stormwater comes into the basement. I can't, I can't tell you how many times we had to shove, pump out the sanitary store water from the basement and then clean the concrete floor with bleach. All our stuff has to be up off the ground because if I don't get to it quick enough, then not only my stuff will be ruined, but the people that live upstairs would be ruined. So what I want to do is encourage to get that North Street Pump Station up to capacity. And the people that are putting their their water into the store line, they should be, they should be stopped somehow because it's not fair to have to worry about if when there's a heavy rain, especially if I'm not home, I don't know how much water will keep on coming into the, you know, store water, not drain water, store water coming into the basement. It's not a healthy situation. So that's, I just want to encourage the town to get that North Street Pump Station up to where it should be working properly. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very important. Good point there. Tim? The stormwater situation interests me a lot because Aquinic Island, which is Newport, Middletown, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, has a $400 million problem. Every time it rains, the sewage plant for the island can't handle it. They dump it in the Narragansett Bay. They've been getting away with it for years, but they're now getting big fines from the feds because they turned out to be the biggest polluter. The municipalities now in Narragansett Bay and not industry. Do we have just one? Don't forget to, we know who you are, but state your name for the record. To Narragansett Cross Gates Road. Thank you. Do we have one line that goes down to the plant that processes the sewage from here? Basically, at the, there's a couple of lines that merge and then it's a single line that goes to the. Do you have any idea of how much the volume increases after a major rain versus a low one? We now have, we put a meter on that. So we now have the ability. Is it like double?
As far as the iron is concerned?
Yeah, for the amount of volume of that's going down to the plant. During heavy rain.
Because of stormwater, it's more than triple.
See, I think the public has no idea of this. And maybe we can get some articles to show up in the newspaper. They had no idea of it. And that's part of the problem. Secondly, I'm curious, where's the why empty its pool when it has to empty the pool, which isn't often, or others for me pools around here? Do you have any idea? That actually goes into the, I believe, the stormwater system at this point. Hopefully. Yep. This is really cool water. It's not a problem. You know, a lot of places they reprocess, this stuff don't irrigate everything, you know, town, parks and everything else. But that would be useful. Then secondly, can we quantify not just this north end area, but other places to determine how much volume's coming off the hill or down this end and get some idea where it's coming from? Also, floor drains, you don't have just to have sump pumps throwing this stuff, floor drains will do it. In the old days, I can tell you the mansions in Newport, they used to put all their downspouts into the sanitary sewer because they liked something to jam it through there. This is before people processed. They used to dump the stuff straight into the ocean, as you all know. But it sounds like this is a significant problem, runs a lot of the core stuff. Somebody, as part of this article, it'd be useful to give an estimate, you know, it's triple. Guess what this is costing? And then does the plant kind of build excess capacity to at least attempt to cover a lot of these things? I don't think most people have any idea what the impact could be on it. Also, where storm sewers and sanitary sewers cross sometimes, I hope we've watched to be sure that if there's a crack in there, you wouldn't necessarily notice it. It would pour in there in large volumes. I think this is a very interesting subject. I've never heard the town really talk about this problem. And it's going to become more expensive, you know, because the standards are getting stricter. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, not one of the most exciting topics, but certainly a very important topic.
Tom Crimmins, I live in the Luke Miller House. First, I want to introduce myself. But second, I wanted to talk about a few of the things, four things with regard to the borough property and the environs of a Luke Miller House that I'm hoping some to be addressed and some just for your consideration so it's on people's radar. First of all, I'd like to get the fence painted. Last time the fence got painted, David Quirk, two owners ago, just got the fence painted. And half of the fence is on my property, half of the fence is on the borough property. So the borough just reimbursed David for half the cost of getting the fence painted. I'm happy to do the same. I got two estimates. I'm happy to go with the lower of the two estimates and get it painted. But it's it's new people here. So.
I've noticed that. I rode my bicycle past there today. It's, yeah, it needs it.
So that's one. And it seems like the Historical Society is doing something by the forage, which I don't know what they're doing down there, but they've got a lot of thickets around the fence down there. So I can have the contractor take that out. But I'm not sure what's going on down. So that's first. Second.
Codate that.
Thanks. Because of the October blizzard, there are a lot of trees on the borough property that I think have dangling, probably dangerous branches. I understand that they're the borough's scheduled in the 38 or 39 acres behind the, you know, between Ridgedale and Central to take care of some of those issues. I just want to make sure that the borough property around the Luke Miller House is on the list for that. The third thing is the garage. When I bought the house almost two years ago, and I'm not an expert at these things, but the inspector told me that it was a lot cheaper to do every five-year maintenance on cedar-shaped roofs based upon the extended life cycle or life of the roof when you do that than it was to replace the roof more frequently. I had the, I had the maintenance done on the roof of the house. That was the five-year mark. So it's now been almost seven years for the garage. So, I mean, you know, that's obviously up to you guys, but that seems like a, you know, short-term expense to save a long-term capital expense to do maintenance. And then the fourth thing is, I understand that in the past, May Day, there were May Day volunteers that worked on the borough property around the Luke Miller House. That that didn't happen last year. There was, well, there were, there were supplies that were dropped off, but but there were no May Day volunteers or anything like that to work on the borough property. I understand, I didn't own the house then, but that two years ago, there were not either. And so I just wanted to see whether it was on the May Day committee's radar that that would start up again as it had in the past. So that's all I had.
We'll check in. So we've got picket fence, the roof, the hangers and the trees. And I think we should also, I had a call from a resident worried about Niles Park. So I think anywhere where the public is, we should be at priority looking for the hangers and the May Day volunteers. And I want to thank you for taking on a Madison treasure and keeping it preserved. It is a great house.
We also have Waterville going.
Yeah, Waterville and then Fertilizerville. There was one other thing that I wanted to mention about, oh, I wanted to mention the high school. The Historical Society is having the high school come on June 1st to do some things on borough property that doesn't get taken care of on May Day. So I just want to let you know about that so that there's not duplicity of effort. Or you can talk to Kathy at the Historical Society about that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Ari?
I just wanted to take two minutes to invite everyone to the Taste of Madison, which is this coming Monday evening from 6:00 until 9:30 at the Park Avenue Club. We are featuring 24 of Madison's restaurants. They will, Garrus, Wines and Liquors, and a number of other wine merchants in town will be providing refreshments to go along with the dining. So tickets can be purchased at Garrus or at Providence Bank Sprouts or Detour. So please come. It's our 11th year. It benefits the Downtown Development Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Rotary Club. Please find civic organizations.
Thank you very much. And, you know, one of the toughest things about going out to dinner in Madison is to try to choose what great restaurant to go to. And here in one night, you can try them all. So be there. All right, James and then Sam, your?
James Sullivan, 25 Rothery Avenue. Just a quick question. Do we have any preliminary numbers, how much sump pumps versus pipe seam seepage on the invasive water at all? Or is it just kind of we were?
It's a, it's tough to, when we know what the jump is during rain, but I think one thing to keep in mind is, as Bob was describing, we have a, you have a leak in a pipe before you line it, it's described as a leak.
Okay.
As opposed to a storm drain going directly or a sump up, it's gallons per minute.
Okay. And also, since there's so much water leaking in, are we contaminating soils already? Water actually leaking out of these sanitary sewers that we know of as we're going through and examining them, the clay pipes and seams? I mean, is this another issue that might be growing in North Streets that we don't know about?
The lining program was extremely comprehensive. That was accomplished about four or five years ago.
Okay. Because I live, I live on Wood, off of Woodland. I remember we had some issues with a sewer there that we lined and collapsed or whatever. And it was just, it was off of Delwood or something. It gave us a lot of trouble. And.
Christmas time.
Yes, Christmas time. I remember. And the third is, what are the three sites that you mentioned before with the economic, I mean, economic, the environmental, Mr. Links said you take care of.
I did.
Yeah. What, well, what are they? I was curious. So that was the.
In my opinion, Bailey Ellis, not nearly even more, but Bailey Ellis, the MRC where pertains to the area by the high school.
Mm-hmm.
And quite frankly, the, the track where the old.
Okay, the old dump site. Yeah. I mean, also, is there any plans to deal with the contaminated water towers that are being dealt with? Because I remember we had some elevated readings of some sort of a contaminant in it. So.
Well.
Yeah, we've, both water towers have been.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. Anyone else? Sam?
Sam Cersei, Park Avenue. I just want to take off where I talked in the beginning there. You know, it's, it's good to see everybody. So that's, that was, I was trying to say, we've got to start talking together and respecting each other. The key word is respect. And whether you're Democrat, Republican, or whatever, you got to listen to us because basically you're the board of directors and we're the shareholders. My pet thing is construction. That's what I specialize in. And I learned from a lot of mistakes in life. And we've made a lot of mistakes in construction. And I don't want to, you know, safety building, borough, you know, in my opinion, all right? I don't want to keep coming here and being part of the, you know, I want to be part of the solution. I want to volunteer myself being in construction, which is my expertise. And I got a good friend of mine who's been in construction. in construction over 35 years named Joe Moniz. I think you know him, Bob, I think Ray. I'd like to be on that construction committee, because we've got a ton of construction coming out. And I think it's important that I could add to it, and give my opinion, and make sure we get the right contracts written up by maybe a construction lawyer that understands construction. Make sure that the contract is written properly, make sure we get our money's worth. Make sure somebody's accountable for their mistakes. And there's been a lot of mistakes around. And I got a whole list of them. And, but like I said, I want to be part of the solution. And this fellow I mentioned, Joe Moniz, has been in business over 30 years, a big contractor. He knows how to read specs like the back of his hand. He's the one who picked up that North Street Pump Station. Again, if he didn't pick it up, there would have been a mess down there. We spent over $40,000, $50,000 for a consultant for drawings. And we, we waste a lot of money. And I think with my expertise, with Joe's actually, that we can help maybe tighten things up a little bit. So like I said, there's, make sure we get what we pay for. And again, like I said, I want to be part of the solution. And Joe will be, I want to, the two of us would like to get on this committee and be part of it. Because I was on the count when I was supposed to be on it, but I tend not to, I don't know. But again, I'm donating my, my expertise, and Joe Moniz. So let us know, yes or no. If it's no, it's okay, no problem. I'll still be coming.
We, we know your background. If you want to show, send me Joe's background, and I'll share with Rob, and we can discuss-
Very good.
He was already-
He, he's not going to come, Carmelo.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a two-packs deal. You've got to get me and Joe together. That's the package deal, okay? Because he don't like to go by himself. I don't like to be alone, okay? We understand politics. Now, another thing, I'm going to make a suggestion-
Now you got to finish up though.
You gave that gentleman an extra-
I know, I'm telling you, finish up, that's all.
One more thing is that, you know, me and my wife, we go to movies a lot. When we go to movies, first thing they do is shut off your email and your cell phones, your blueberries, or blackberry, strawberry, whatever they are. I'm going to make a suggestion, put a sign in front of the door here, everything shut off till after the meeting. That's just a suggestion. Because I think that's one of the problems with all this emails, and that's why everybody gets confused, who says something, this and that. I'm from the old school. You know, I like to talk people person to person. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and move on to ordinances for introduction.
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for April 9th. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call ordinance two dash two thousand twelve for first reading, ask the borough to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for a new gas pump with card reading station and accessories.
Mayor, I move ordinance two dash two thousand twelve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move consent agenda resolutions R-98 dash two thousand twelve through R-102 dash two thousand twelve.
Second.
Discussion, or any need to be pulled? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Any unfinished business? Approval of vouchers, please.
No, I got it. Public safety, $19,412.64. Health and public assistance, $3,434.44. Public works and engineering, $104,097.52. Community affairs, $26,656.54. Finance and borough clerk, $3,195,167.48. Utilities, $1,096,712.24. Total is $4,445,480.86.
I move the vouchers for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Any new business?
Just a reminder, I forgot to do it on my earlier report. The borough is still on the odd even watering schedule for the lawns, and being that we've had a very dry, if you want to call it summer, spring, whatever you want to call it, we've not had a lot of rainfall. So just a reminder to the residents.
Thank you, Bob.
That's it.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
You all?